...you all to the May 7, 2019 meeting of the Whitehall City Council for the purpose of considering such matters that may come before. And I ask everyone to please rise for a moment of silence and remain standing for the place. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Morrison, Bailey?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Elmore?
Present.
Coniston?
Here.
Hecker?
Here.
President Green?
Present.
Ms. President, move to excuse the absent members.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Rodriguez to excuse the absent members. Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
The absent members have been excused. Next, we have our approval of minutes for April 16, 2019, agenda and regular meeting.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the April 16 minutes.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Coniston, a second by Ms. Elmore for -- to approve the April 16, 2019 minutes. Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
The minutes have been approved. At this time, we have a special presentation from the Executive Director of Celebrate One, Ms. Erica Clark Jones.
She's not here.
Well, then, we won't have a special presentation unless someone else is here to do it. Okay, well, maybe she'll come in later. All right, so we'll move on past that, and it's our first opportunity for poll public. If anyone would like to come forward, you have up to three minutes. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Sharon Leston, 4049 Anthony Court, South Whitehall, 52-year member, resident of Whitehall. As a member of the Whitehall Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association, I would like to thank the following for attending and supporting our spaghetti dinner fundraiser that was held on April the 28th, 2019. Jim and Maria Graham, Jim is also a member of our organization, Dan and Diane Miller, they are also members, and Dan worked in the kitchen along with Sergeant Grub and myself who made the most delicious sauce of meatballs.
It was great.
Grub is fantastic, yeah, he really is.
He's really great.
Larry Morrison, who is also a member of our organization, Karen Coniston, Wes Katner, Steve and Katie Quinzel, so Whitehall, the WCPAA members work with the Whitehall Police Department, and we volunteer for different events in the city to help our police department. I truly do want to thank each and every one of you that attended, and if I missed anybody because I was in the kitchen, I'm sorry for that, but thank you so much for taking your time out of your Sunday to come and help us. I appreciate it, and so does our organization. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else who would like to come forward at this time for poll public? State your name and address for the record, please.
Michael Spicer, 4227 Rick and Barker Avenue, apartment 606. I just wanted to compliment you all, thank you for the hard work that you are doing for the city of Whitehall. I have been a Whitehall resident since 2009, and so I love the progress in the rebuilding and the rebranding and the reimagining, and I am proud to be a citizen of Whitehall. So, thank you for your hard work and keep going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We still have -- we're still open for poll public. We might as well get everybody up here.
No, no pressure.
Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Cadisia Torian, and I'm at 362 Wildberry Lane. That's actually Columbus, Ohio, 43213, so I am here to support. I am new to Celebrate One as a community connector, so that's what I'm doing here. I just want to say thank you, guys. I did grow up in Whitehall, graduated from Whitehall Union in 2012.
Awesome.
All right, so since you're already up here, I'm gonna let you introduce Ms. Erica Clark Jones.
All right, Ms. Erica Clark Jones, Executive Director of Celebrate One.
Excellent. Thank you. You're welcome. Glad you're with us. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My apologies, I, for as long as I have lived in the area, I did graduate from Columbus Eastmore, I thought that the municipal building was between Maine and Livingston, so...
Oh, that was in the old days.
That was in the old days, is that what that was? I'm showing my age. I do have just a packet of information that I'd like to share, if that's okay, and I believe I have enough copies for everyone, so if I can, thank you. Those are coming around, and I'll start to read this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
There you go.
And I want to welcome Cadisia to our team, and thank you for time on your agenda tonight. I'll be brief, Mayor and Council President and fellow members of council. My name's Erica Clark Jones, and I have the honor of serving as the Executive Director of Celebrate One, which is Franklin County's infant mortality reduction initiative. So, we have a challenge here in our county. As you can see from the blue slide, around 18,000 births every year in Franklin County, but we suffer about 155 deaths, which is a really high rate for a community as amazing as ours, frankly. You can see, we have, I'll try to condense this, 79 of those 155 deaths are in key neighborhoods, but we're really looking at Whitehall data, and I'll get to that slide briefly to let you know what's going on in your backyard. If you'll turn the page, and you'll look at the 2017 infant deaths by race. So, I had mentioned we lost 155 babies in 2017, that's about an average for us. Over the last 10 years, we've been losing between 155 to 170 babies a year, and it's way too high. For a city our size, the national goal for us would be to lose about 125 babies, that would be about normal, just birth defects and so forth. So, we're above that. And so, you can see the race, the racial composition of the babies that we lose, and over 50% of those babies are African-American. So, for Celebrate One, our mission, our vision, is that every baby, no matter what their race, no matter what their family's address, what their family's income, be able to celebrate first birthday. Infant mortality is defined by an infant not living through their first birthday, so they have to be born alive and then live through their first birthday for that to be a success measure for us. We're losing too many babies before then. If you'll turn the page, you can see our goal is aggressive, we want to reduce our infant mortality rate by 40% by the year 2020, and we have a three-to-one racial disparity when it comes to infant deaths, and we want to close that. I did include a couple of slides for comment texts. The bottom slide on page three is infant mortality rates by county in Ohio, and we really look at the big three, Ohio death, Hamilton, and Franklin. And you can see, we're doing a little better than our sister cities in Cincinnati and Cleveland, but we're not even the Ohio rate, and the Ohio rate is too high. Governors Kasich, as well as Governor DeWine, both feel this was a priority for them, and we applaud them for making it a priority. Just quickly, top of page four, infant mortality in Franklin County. If you'll see, the first three boxes, I just want to call your attention, the orange box is 2007 to 11, the blue box is 2012, 2013, and 14, and then 2015 through 2017. And so, you can see, for the first set, it's all populations in Franklin County, we're declining. I can tell you the 2018 rates, we've declined again, so we feel like we are making progress on this goal. Especially among the non-Hispanic white babies, we're losing fewer. As a matter of fact, we exceeded the national goal for non-Hispanic white babies just this year, and we're really, really thrilled about that. And then, non-Hispanic black deaths are coming down, we're progressing, just not where we want to be yet. The leading cause of infant death is preterm, so that's babies born too small or too soon. And what contributes to that is way of life, quality of life, what is stressing mom during her pregnancy, it could be domestic violence, it could be stress caused by violence, or unstable housing, or lack of prenatal care and supports, and that's what we want to prevent. And so, if you'll turn, and I'll call your attention to page five, these are the key neighborhoods Celebrate One is concerned with within the city of Columbus. Our office is a part of the Mayor's Office of the City of Columbus, but the state believes in what we're doing, and so we're branching out into different areas within the county, and Whitehall is one of those areas. If Whitehall were on the top slide, it would look very close to southeast, and southeast, frankly, is Refugee Road, Port Wright Road, near Canal Winchester, the Columbus area between here and Canal Winchester is what we're calling southeast. And the chart below, we had our epidemiologists work really hard over the last two days to compile this information for your review, but you can see the trends of both births, infant deaths, and preterm births here in Whitehall. And quite frankly, it's that middle column, that infant mortality rate column, from 2010 to the present, the infant deaths in Whitehall have been increasing.
Wow.
And that's why we're here. So, we feel preterm birth, as you see, is the leading cause of infant death, that's also increasing throughout the years. And so, you should know that we feel that place has just as much impact on a mom's stress level and preterm birth rates just as much as race does. So, if you turn the page, you'll see, these are the strategies we're working on. We did the Franklin County Infant Mortality Task Force came together and said, what are the things that are absolutely working in other places, and what do we need to do here? What aren't we doing here? And so, our work is broken out into these eight areas or seven areas. I put a star next to the things we think are key, and that is increasing prenatal care for high-risk families. We have one phone number to call, anyone in the county can call to get connected with their first prenatal care appointment, and then they triage for all other issues. Also, perinatal care, the time in between having a baby to having your next baby, which we think home visiting addresses that. And then, promoting safe sleep practices. We lose far too many babies every year to just unsafe sleep. These are babies not sleeping alone, on their backs in an empty crib. These are babies that are oftentimes sharing a family bed or a parent bed or co-sleeping. 75% of our deaths are sleep-related deaths, so about 20 deaths last year occurred through parents sleeping with their child, or them sleeping in a family bed when it was too young, right, three months old and suffocating in the bed. So, we're pushing really hard in these areas. I wanted just to include for you the funding sources of our work. I want you to know that public funds are about 50% of our budget, 17% coming from the state, the rest coming from Franklin County and the city of Columbus, and then we have a significant amount of private dollars, private corporations, good corporate citizens here in Franklin County, and as well as all four major hospital systems. So, Nation of White Children's is in, Ohio State, Ohio Health, PMO, all partners for us. You can see the focus, I'll let you take a look at, but I wanted to give context to Cadisia and her work. You know, supporting pregnancy, connecting women who are not connected to reliable support, supports that will make a difference in their pregnancy, is a key strategy for us. And we're really thrilled to announce that Cadisia has now won the ground in Whitehall. Her job is literally to find women who are not connected to services and get them connected to services that will make a difference, to help them have healthy pregnancies. And so, Cadisia will be working day and night, building relationships with other trusted community partners here. Her goal is to touch 240 women per year just in Whitehall. So, we're really thrilled that she joined us, and she's only been with us, how long have you been with us?
One week.
One week. So, she came back, so I said, "That's a great sign." And so, I'm happy to take any questions.
Wonderful.
I remember a very long time ago, there was a hospital that provided, for a very low fee, all the medical care for the mother and for the baby for the first, I don't know, two or three months or something like that, but anyway, everything was supplied, and it was like a flat-rate price, and it was, I mean, you could have a baby for $150 or something. This was a very long time ago, but still, even then...
Really?
Okay, so it was in the late 60s.
Okay.
All right? So, that's still a long time ago, but still, my point is that it was far more expensive to have a baby than $150. That included the mothers, all the mother, all the medicine, and this is prenatal care for the mother, I guess that's what you call it, anyway, pre-birth care for the mother. I just wonder if there is any thought has been giving, given to partnering with a local hospital, or is that even available now? And if not, has any thought been given to, you know, partnering with hospitals, helping them understand that, you know, that that pre-birth care and stuff can make a big, I would think would make a big difference?
You're right, and the thinking, your thinking is exactly right, because they don't cost $150 anymore.
Well, I'm sure it would be a little bit more than that, but the hospital basically absorbed, you know, and they were doing that for people in the community who did not have insurance, you know, could not afford, you know, to go to the doctor once a month, couldn't afford to get all the vitamins and the iron and all that kind of, and they were doing that, actually, at the St. Anne's Hospital.
Yeah, I remember, that's where I was born, too.
Yeah, and everybody just about...
Yeah, I know, I was born at St. Anne's, that's right. So, the good news is, we have one phone number to call called Step One, and that's how we market it. Step One is your first step in pregnancy, and it's 614-721-0009. You could be uninsured, just found out you're pregnant, and you just need to get into care. They not only will find you a doctor that will take you in, preferably in your area that you can get to, they'll find out if you need transportation to the appointment, but then they'll say, "Are you, do you have insurance?" And if you do not, they, under our former governor, John Kasich, Medicaid assumes you will be eligible. So, they make, they make the determination that you're pregnant, you're going to be eligible for some kind of care. Someone else can figure it out later, but we are going to, they call it presumptive eligibility, you will be eligible, and they immediately start in on care. And that coverage, usually through Medicaid or a plan, they assign you to a plan, covers you through six months of the baby's life, the first six months of the baby's life. So, gets mom in the postpartum care, makes sure the baby has well-baby checks and gets its immunization. So, the thinking is the exact same, just now they assign you to a plan, every woman, no matter what her status is, can call that number and just start that process.
Well, that's something that people ought to know about, because I've never...
Absolutely, absolutely, and our...
And I don't know how many people up here would know that, but that is a, you know, that's something worthwhile for people to know, and for us to know, so that we could pass that message on.
Absolutely.
You know...
And Cadisia will be out in the community also carrying that message, but you are right. And I think part of that is because the state said, "We don't want an embarrassingly high infant mortality rate."
Yes.
And Ohio has been, you know, we were 48th in the nation out of 50 states when I started. Now, we're like 30, well, maybe 39th, so we have steadily increased, but we fell a long way down.
Yes, for a state like Ohio, to be in the Midwest and stuff, we should be at, you know, at or near the top.
I agree.
We're not a state that's impoverished.
That's right.
Not saying any other, listen, if you're from a state that you may think is impoverished, don't be calling me a liar. I'm just saying, we are better off here than what a lot of other places are, so, and that shouldn't, you know, that shouldn't, you know, that should certainly have an impact on these type of statistics.
Agreed.
Erica, I know that one Amber about called to me months ago, and we were, I'm glad that you're on board, Cadisia, I know that she was talking about coming on board, so glad you're there. Have you been able to connect yet with the schools and with the guidance counselors over at the high school?
That is a great question. Amber was stuck on flights coming back from her time away, so I don't know the answer yet, and Cadisia just started, and I don't think you know the answer yet, right? Okay, that's okay, that would have been really impressive, though. That's okay, we're gonna get you there. I don't know, but I know Amber has been out trying to make relationships, and she's partnering with the Franklin County Action Team that you have, so I think she just wants to be in lockstep with the things you all have planned on.
Erica and Cadisia, I'll get you some names, and I'm going to help you out as well. I gave some to Amber, so I'm sure she'll give them to you as well. I mean, obviously, you're going to kind of be the resource that people go to, so you'll want to make sure that you have as much information as possible on WIC and on all of the different org, other organizations that are able to go ahead and, you know, sign these, sign these women up and to help them out. So, there's a lot of resources out there that people really don't know about.
You're right, yep, you're right.
And that's a shame, that people aren't aware of it.
That's correct.
We have an immunization clinic here on the last Wednesday of every month, and that may be a good place to get some information out, because we have a lot of young families come in, and I've seen a lot of, you know, pregnant women come in, so, and our population that comes in is very diverse, so that may be a good place to try to reach out.
Do you have any cards?
I have Y's and my cards.
Okay. I work with a lot of families, I also work at the Y, so I would love to connect, we're building a Y in Whitehall, so I would love to connect, too. And then, secondly, do you guys go with young moms to any of the prenatal, like, any of the appointments and things like that? Because I found that a lot of moms don't know what to ask.
Yeah, we offer that.
Okay.
If they are comfortable with it, we absolutely go with them and support them, because we do. We find that people may take the initial step and then not follow through, and our goal is that they follow through. Cadisia has to touch every mom at least three times, that's the goal that we've set. She tracks it in a program that the state supports, so that everyone can see her work plan and the interactions with every woman that she interfaces with. So, we will totally do that. We've had, you know, every mom is different, and we make them where they are. There are some moms that just want the initial information and can take it from there. Other moms, we've had our connectors, which is what we call Cadisia Navigator or Connector. We, they've been there for the presence of the birth, and it was the person's only trusted individual support person in labor and delivery and then afterward. So, we are, we are fully invested in the health of the baby and for mom.
Great. So, if your, is your contact number Step One for everybody, Cadisia and everybody that...
No, that is a great question, no. And you do or do not have your cards?
Yes, I have my cards.
Okay, I don't think, I know her business cards didn't come in. Celebrate, our website is celebrateone.info, everyone can connect us there, but any pregnant mom can start with Step One. And I would give out my personal phone number, I think we got a new phone number at our office, it's like 645-1919, but I'm not quite sure, because we did, it's new, and we have a phone tree for everyone, including Cadisia.
So, is that based upon the neighborhoods? So, say, for example, there's somebody in the Franklinton area, do you call, like, do you call Step One?
Step One, yep, that's right.
And say, "I want a contact or connector for that neighborhood."
That's it, that's exactly right, yep.
This number that you gave us before, that 721 number, would that be the one that somebody would call if they are in need of resources and some help?
Absolutely, absolutely.
In other words, 614-721-0001.
0009, like nine months of pregnancy. Like nine months of pregnancy.
There you go.
That's right. Or Celebrate One.
Rory and I both had it wrong, yep. Well, look, Step One. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good information, thank you.
Yes. All right, well, I think we've pretty much covered everybody, so we'll move on to our standing committee reports. However, we have not met since our last regular council meeting, and so we shall move on to our official reports, and we'll begin with our mayor, Ms. Kim Mann.
Good evening. I really don't have any updates as for today. I do know that we had a very successful weekend with the partnership with COSI over the weekend on Friday and Saturday, and I applaud everyone that was involved in that, they did a wonderful job. So, other than that, I'll pass on.
All right, Mr. Miller?
I have no official report tonight either, but I would like to ask for favorable consideration on ordinances 54, 55, 56, 57, 59, and Resolution 22. I'm telling you, Resolution 23, I'm...
Sounds like a Johnny Chris. All right. Well, that brings us to our treasurer, Mr. Steve Quincey.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to have an official report this evening.
All right, well, that brings it to me, then. The following officials' reports have been filed in the council office since our last meeting. We have the Treasurer's Investment Report for March 2019, the Treasurer's Activity by Fund Report for March 2019, as well as the Treasurer's Fund Reconciliation Report for March 2019. Under Communications, Petitions, and Claims, we have received a notice from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for a transfer of ownership of the D5, D6 liquor permit for Gulliver? Investment Corporation, is that? Guyler.
It's Guyler.
Guyler, all right. Yeah, there's no V, is there?
Right, it's Guyler.
Okay, all right. DBA Tailgater Sports Bar and Grill, 4680 East Main Street, Whitehall, Ohio, 43213, to the B&amp;Z Investment LLC, DBA Tailgater Sports Bar and Grill, 4680 East Main Street, Whitehall, Ohio, 43213. We've also received a notice from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for a transfer of 100 shares of stock from the D5, D6 liquor permit to Tripp Global Chance LLC, DBA Players, 4380 East Main Street, Whitehall, Ohio, 43213. We also received one regarding a notice from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for a transfer of ownership of the C1, C2, D6 liquor permit for Harry Caruna, Caruna Incorporated, DBA Super Saver, 555 South Hamilton Road, Whitehall, Ohio, 43213, to the Nannick GRS and H Incorporated, DBA Super Saver, 555 South Hamilton Road, Whitehall, Ohio, 43213. We've also received the agenda for the May 2, 2000, meeting of the Planning Commission. And so, all the communications, petitions, and claims, at this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Al to please call the roll, and let each member of council, given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda this evening and prior to the meeting, and, yeah, prior to the meeting including any add-on legislation. How about that?
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
All right, so we'll begin our ordinances and resolutions for the evening. Under third readings, we have nothing, so we'll move on to our second readings, and we begin with Resolution 21, 2019, it's approving and adopting the Franklin County Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution 21, 2019, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Coniston, a second by Ms. Heck for introduction and suspension of all rules on Resolution 21, 2019. Questions or comments? Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended on Resolution 21, 2019.
Move to proceed.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Coniston, a second by Ms. Heck for approval of Resolution 21, 2019. Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Resolution 21, 2019 has been adopted. It's the only item we have under second reading. Under first reading, we start with Ordinance 53, 2019, it's authorizing adoption of the May 2019 replacement pages to the codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 53, 2019, move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Ms. Elmore for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance 53, 2019. Questions or comments? Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended on Ordinance 53, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Ms. Elmore for adoption of Ordinance 53, 2019. Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
ordinance fifty-three, twenty nineteen has been adopted. Our next ordinance is fifty-four, twenty nineteen. It's making and approving a fund transfer in the amount of forty-two thousand, two hundred, forty-nine dollars, fifty cents from the WinPity Fund to the General Fund and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance fifty-four, two thousand nineteen. Move for suspension of the rules.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey, a second by Mr. Rodriguez for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance fifty-four, twenty nineteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended on ordinance fifty-four, twenty nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second. Motion by Mr. Bailey, a second by Mr. Rodriguez for adoption of ordinance fifty-four, twenty nineteen. Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance fifty-four, twenty nineteen has been adopted. Next up, we have ordinance fifty-five, twenty nineteen. It's transferring nine thousand, six hundred, five dollars, ninety-seven cents from previously unappropriated monies in the General Fund to the Economic Development Incentive Planning Fund, making a supplemental appropriation of sixteen thousand, four hundred, two dollars, eighty-eight cents from the Economic Development Incentives Planning Fund to Economic Development Incentives Expense Account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance fifty-five, two thousand nineteen. Move for suspension of all the rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bailey in a tie for a second.
I can show you now.
I'm going to call on Ms. Heck for the second. Questions or comments? Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended on ordinance fifty-five, twenty nineteen.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, a second by Ms. Heck for adoption of ordinance fifty-five, twenty nineteen. Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Heck.
ordinance fifty-five, twenty nineteen has been adopted. Our next ordinance is fifty-six, twenty nineteen. It is unappropriating ninety-four thousand, two hundred, thirty dollars from the park improvements expense account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance fifty-six, two thousand nineteen. Move for suspension of all the rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bailey, a second by Ms. Coniston for introduction and suspension of all rules on fif, on ordinance fifty-six, twenty nineteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance fifty-six, twenty nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, a second by Ms. Coniston for adoption of ordinance fifty-six, twenty nineteen. Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Ordinance fifty-six, twenty nineteen has been adopted. Our next ordinance is fifty-seven, twenty nineteen. It's authorizing the creation of the two thousand and eighteen Safe Parks Grant Account, advancing six thousand, six hundred dollars from unappropriated monies in the Law Enforcement Trust Fund to the Safe Parks Grant Fund, making a fund transfer of seven thousand, of seven, of seven hundred and thirty-three dollars, thirty-three cents from unappropriated monies in the Law Enforcement Trust Fund to the Safe Parks Grant Fund, making an appropriation of seven thousand, three hundred, thirty-three dollars, thirty-three cents from the Safe Parks Grant Fund to the two thousand and eighteen Safe Parks Grant Account and declaring an emergency. You get that, right?
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance fifty-seven, twenty nineteen and move for the suspension of all rules. Second.
A motion by Ms. Coniston, a second by Ms. Elmore for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance fifty-seven, twenty nineteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Heck.
Rules have been suspended on ordinance fifty-seven, twenty nineteen.
Move to adopt. Second.
Motion by Ms. Coniston, a second by Ms. Elmore for adoption of ordinance fifty-seven, twenty nineteen. Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Is it yes? Is it significant?
Coniston?
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
All right, ordinance fifty-seven, twenty nineteen has been adopted. Our next ordinance is fifty-eight, twenty nineteen. It's approving the declaration of restrictions regarding the Big Walnut Tributary Restoration Project located within Whitehall Community Park.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance fifty-eight, twenty nineteen and move for suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Elmore, a second by Ms. Heck for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance fifty-eight, twenty nineteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Heck.
Rules have been suspended on ordinance fifty-eight, twenty nineteen.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Elmore, a second by Ms. Heck for adoption of ordinance fifty-eight, twenty nineteen. Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance fifty-eight, twenty nineteen has been adopted. Next, we have ordinance fifty-nine, twenty nineteen. It's providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of four million, two hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of paying the cost of the improvement and expansion of the city's municipal recreation facilities by constructing, reconstructing, furnishing, and equipping the facility at Whitehall Community Park, including one or more additions thereto, oh gosh, together with all the necessary and related appurtenances. Thereto and declaring an emergency. I don't like that word.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance fifty-nine, two thousand nineteen. Move for suspension of all the rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bailey, a second by Ms. Coniston for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance fifty-nine, twenty nineteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended on ordinance fifty-nine, twenty nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Bailey, a second by Ms. Coniston for adoption of ordinance fifty-nine, twenty nineteen. Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance fifty-nine, twenty nineteen has been adopted. Next, we have resolution twenty-two, twenty nineteen. It's resolving to approve then and now certificates and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce resolution twenty-two, two thousand nineteen. Move for suspension of all the rules.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey, a second by Mr. Rodriguez for introduction and suspension of all rules on resolution twenty-two, twenty nineteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Heck.
Rules have been suspended on resolution twenty-two, twenty nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second. Motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for adoption of resolution twenty-two, twenty nineteen. Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Heck.
Resolution twenty-two, twenty nineteen has been adopted. Our next resolution is twenty-three, twenty nineteen. It's authorizing the mayor to apply for and accept an Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services grant through the Ohio Community Police Relations Grant Program and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce resolution twenty-three, twenty nineteen and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second. A motion by Ms. Coniston, a second by Mr. Rodriguez for introduction and suspension of all rules on resolution twenty-three, twenty nineteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended on resolution twenty-three, twenty nineteen.
Move to adopt.
Second. Motion by Ms. Coniston, a second by Mr. Rodriguez for adoption of resolution twenty-three, twenty nineteen. Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Heck.
Resolution twenty-three, twenty nineteen has been adopted. It's the last item of legislation we have before us this evening. That brings us to our second opportunity for poll public. You're all welcome to come back up again if you want. All right, we'll move on to community date board. And this time, I'm going to start it off. On May twenty-third at six P.M., we have the Whitehall Yearling High School trial. Come and support our legal rams here at the municipal, municipal building. It'll be at six P.M. We're located at three sixty South Yearling Road. We hope to see you all here. All you out there on YouTube, whatever it is. Facebook. It'll be on YouTube tomorrow. So for those of you on YouTube tomorrow, you can come also. All right, who else has got something?
Saturday, maybe eleventh is the leather carrier's food drive.
That's right.
Put a bag of, put a bag of groceries out, they'll pick it up. If they don't pick it up, call me.
Okay. Who else has something? All right, we'll move on to poll council and we'll begin with Mr. Bailey.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you all for coming out tonight and sharing. I had to work that day, I apologize. Couldn't be there, but I have helped in the past.
Yes, you have.
And ladies from Celebrate One, I actually learned some things that I didn't know that are very alarming and I'm sure that the work you folks will do may have an impact and make a difference. And that's pretty encouraging. So thank Erica for coming in and sharing that with us. And other than that, that's all I have.
All right, Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. What'd he say? The, the presentation was very educational, it was very good. Wish the best for the program. And Sharon, yes, good to see you as always. Thanks everybody else for coming. That's all I have, Mr. President.
All right, Ms. Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for everybody watching. Thank you for everybody that came up and spoke about the, the information in Celebrate Ohio. Sharon, thank you for all the good work that you do. Also, thank you for just the information or the, the kudos that you gave counsel for the work that we're doing. It is very difficult. And oftentimes, you don't hear the good work you're doing, you only hear about the bad things. And also, I want to also take this opportunity to send prayers out for the school in Denver Highlands Ranch that, you know, anytime kids go to school now and, and you have to wonder whether or not you're, there's going to be gunfire, that is a sad commentary on the state that we live in. So just the prayers for the family, for the kids, and, and everybody that has suffered during that time. Also, I want to thank Two Tons for a wonderful celebration, grand opening last Friday. Look for great things to, to continue to happen. And that's it, Mr. President.
All right, Ms. Coniston.
Well, I'd like to thank Lori tonight for helping me out with her paper because technology is great except for when it doesn't work.